You can enjoy a quiet spot separate from everybody else. But if you were having a large function, you could use that big area and enjoy that as well. So that's what, and then the entire site is basically the same thing is that the site plan was drawn to make it feel like your house, if you're landscaping your house. We're not doing, we didn't, we didn't say how many trees do we have to put in here? We're landscaping this so that you feel like you're in a park or you're in this complex. So that's the whole concept of this is there is not a lot of green space as far as lawns. So we're doing a lot of landscaping in the riverside. We will have some lawn areas, you know, all by Monroe, but mainly inside here it'll be courtyards and landscaping.
If I might go back to Mark's comment about the corner for the kayaks. That area will be secured for the benefit of our residents. But that corner for the kayak is something that we designed to be a public space. It's gonna be kayak holders available for the public teams. So it's a public amenity. It's not a private type thing that'll be available for the public. I've been enjoying kayaking there, the Zanstros, other people on our team have. As there, a couple of weeks ago, there was fifteen, sixteen kayakers. It wasn't a club, it's all different people enjoying it. And we want to be friendly and promote the use of that type of thing. And like I said, do something cool. So I wanna stress that it's a public amenity that we will build that'll be available for the public.
I like how you put the trees into the phase three. I mean, you don't, you didn't have to put that many more trees into that third phase. But it's just kinda neat to see how it's gonna lay out where, how, that's how the buildings will be.
Well, they, they kinda asked me to lay the entire site out so that you folks could see it and see what our intentions are for long term.
Commissioners, any other questions of Mark? Andy, any questions of Mark?
Uh, no, there are none.
General Public, any question of Mark, as long as he's up?
No, I don't have one on that, but I did have one on section six. I think you said it was historical, Andy.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any, is that in the historic district? Is there any historical things there that would prohibit the vendor, uh, the investors from making changes to the order of the high school? There's nothing like that in there?
Not to my knowledge.
Knowledge?
Um, when we, in our report, when we talk about historic structure, we talk about just the general, it's more of a cultural relevance, I guess, that the building has relative to the community.
But it's, but you're not aware if it's in the historical district and whether it would restrict them from doing certain things?
Yeah, we can check into that, but I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
I'm not either, but I just heard you mention it earlier.
Any other questions? Um, at, at this point, we're through all thirteen objectives, but I'd like to invite Chris up here. Or, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's finish, I, I would like to hear before we finish, after we finish this section. I'd like to hear from Chris and also Kevin for just brief foundings at least.
Okay, so we got two more of the objectives left before we get into the rest of the standards. So objective twelve is to combine coordinate architectural styles, building forms, and building relationships within the P U D. Obviously with the bus garage and, uh, and the, um, and the school, the school has its own kind of architectural character. They have provided some elevations as far as what the outside of the other buildings will look like. Um, and there's also, they have a website for the project. It wasn't part of the submittal, but just some kind of regular research group over there. I'm looking at some images using there. Um, you know, overall, I think that, you know, in our view, again, as, as, as the planners, those seem to work well together and I think would possibly impact, um, the city as far as what those styles and coordination are. They all seem to be made of, you know, fairly high quality materials. And that kind of leads into the thirteenth objective, which is to ensure the quality of construction commensurate with other developments within the city. You know, they stated in the application package that the quality of construction will meet or exceed that of other buildings in and around the city. If, if you guys want to ask some more detailed question about how that's gonna happen, I mean, that's just kind of a conclusory statement without a lot of evidence. So if you want to know more specifics about how they would actually accomplish that, um, this would be a good time to ask.
That leads me right into inviting Chris to come on up and tell us about the building. Thank you. First name, last name, and the address, please.
Chris Strohler, six eight hundred on River Drive in Alto. Philbert. So starting from dressing casual, I'd like to sit in the back and do a poll. Yeah, I'll help everybody.
Can you tell us something about the building materials and what you envision, I mean, using or, you know, just the general feel for what, what we're looking for here?
The existing structures, obviously they're gonna stay brick and blockish, somewhat commercial looking. The challenge there is how do you soften that and make it more residential? Mark's doing a great job, particularly stuff with the canopy coverage, the tall trees and the landscaping, grading up to the buildings, which makes the building, it's not a big block structure anymore. Uh, the other way you can do that is by using different materials. So we have hardy siding on the top, a little bit more than half, and then hardy siding on the back. So it's not entirely just a big block structure, but it's brick and hardy siding. And that'll be two or three different colors, more of a residential nature, you know, that's a flat roof. And then the garages, which you don't see there, again, have a low pitch roof on them similar to the building that are made out of hardy siding and residential type structures. The, the entries on the back are timber and wood, again, softening up that hard building approach. Tends, tends a little bit more towards residential.
Windows? Chris, windows, glass?
Yes, uh, full glass on the front, floor to ceiling Anderson windows. We haven't totally talked about color yet. I, I envisioned them black, but we haven't settled on that kind of thing yet. Nice canopies on the riverside, they'll have stainless steel handrail and have different timber structures. We're bracketing everything. Lots of glass on the riverside, um, ten foot, you know, eight foot windows all the way across with two foot transoms up above.
Are you planning anything for roofs up top?
We're, um, not planning, exploring. Um, it's, it's not difficult to do. You have to have a client that will support that kind of thing. Um, it's not expensive, it's not inexpensive. It would be an awesome feature. So it is possible, but it's expensive.
Would, would each unit have its own look inside, in interior? Will they be able to pick it? What it's gonna look like on the inside or are they all cookie cutters or tell me something?
No, there are, uh, I'm drawing a blank, there are five or six models.
Yeah, so. Get my exercise in, yeah, my exercise. Yes, variety of units and then people have the ability to customize.
So both kind of combinations?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Chris mentioned it, but floor to ceiling glass, uh, which gives it a pretty dramatic look from the inside. Looking out, it's almost infinity edge looking out to the river. So that's pretty cool. And I wanna touch on something that Andy has said regarding the statement that it'll meet or exceed the quality of other buildings in Lowell, truthfully. I didn't know how to answer that. I'm the one that supplied that narrative because like any municipality, there's rundown buildings. And then you've got the downtown district here, you've got a car dealership, you've got a new Burger King going in and Impact Church. So best we could do is talk to the materials that we're gonna use and then you draw your own conclusions whether that meter exceeds other buildings in Lowell. So, and it can be invasive, I just didn't know how to answer it.
Right.
Thank you.
Fair enough. One we haven't talked to is the engineer. So, and Kevin, I believe is your name, if you'll give us your full name and your vision of the product.
Sure. Kevin Rosine from Rosine and Associates, we're at fifty fifty-five thousand to northeast. And, uh, that's a part of me, I'm the owner of the company, but I did not do the engineering on this. The engineer, uh, did that, uh, the work on this, I worked with him on it and worked with Todd on it, brought it into the actual stuff. So he wasn't able to be here today. So I brushed up on it and I don't have all of the answers, but I know that our, our biggest challenge early on in was the floodplain. So, um, most of the bus garage is in the floodplain by about a foot. So we are proposing to raise it to get it out of the floodplain. We really don't wanna mess with flood insurance for these units. So we've, we've raised the floor of the bus garage and I believe it has a step in it as well. So the, uh, the, the phase three in northeast corner of the project, I know is like ninety-five percent above floodplain, so that's not so much an issue. It just kinda clips the south and east corner of that. And then parts of, uh, I believe, I believe the entire school building is in the floodplain. And that's just something that's just gonna have to be dealt with, it's been that way for years and we're not gonna raise that building. So that was, that was kind of the biggest challenge from the engineering aspect. And then just working with an existing site with, that's fairly small and getting everything to work, which it took us a while, but everything appears to work very well now.
When you talk about raising, you're not gonna pick the building up?
Right.
Bring the floor up on it?
Correct.
Yes. Build and?
Yep.
And I'm gonna ask Kevin to correct me if I'm wrong, but early on in this project, we discussed there is a practical component that when there was a large flood here a few years ago, everybody was watching the transformer crossing the launch ramp. When we were considering this project, I remember meeting with Sue and with Mike and talking about, everybody was watching that transformer and water didn't get to that height. And that transformer was considerably bigger than the rest of the site. Reality is that there's never been any water getting up to the site and that the FEMA floodplain map is from, was done prior to the control of the dam here. So when Kevin and I talked about it, we said usually you can do what's called a loma, a lotter, flatter of, uh, management.
Map and display?
Yeah, that, uh, you shoot the elevation, you say, all right, it's no longer here, and they shoot you a letter back saying, fine, you're at the floodplain. But in this case, we would've had it done, a study of the watershed, which would've been six feet further. So there's a practical piece and there's the reality piece.
So I think the, the transformer you're talking about is something that according to everybody we've talked to, if that transformer went underwater, it would do major harm to the entire structural system of the city.
Didn't like saying that?
Yeah, and it's never done that. And there, we've had some hundred year events, hundred year flood, flood events. So I believe that that, uh, transformer is a good two feet below the published floodplain. So, yeah, you've got a, you've got a published floodplain and because of maybe some dam issues and hydrological issues, really isn't that accurate? So like you said, practically speaking, uh, probably not a flood issue. Legally speaking, um, if you get a mortgage and the mortgage company says, hey, it looks like our FEMA map shows you're in the floodplain. Yeah, legally, you have, you have to, you know, do the paperwork. And probably some of the folks in the, the schoolhouse will end up maybe having to get some flying charts in some certain minutes.
Any other questions, commissioners? Kevin, thank you very much, appreciate it. In, in summary here, after we've gone through the thirteen objectives, are there any, any questions from commissioners at this point?
I just had a question, a point in conversation, I guess, for everybody's, just the, the parking issue. I know they know they're short, but, um, uh, that would be one thing that, you know, be concerned for neighborhoods around if they're, I mean, they're, they're at least, they're at least eleven spaces short of the required eighty-eight. And if you look at the square footage, when you think about, you know, your average SUV, they're about, you know, they've got a little under five thousand square feet parking garages and they really need about ten thousand, eleven thousand square feet for cars. So I don't know, you know, um, how I'd be, wanna take that? I don't wanna, you know.
Like I went down there this weekend, this whole section along the library was completely full and there's nobody living there. We gotta do something about parking downtown.
Yeah. Well, and I, I noticed that they were including the two public lots, including where, over here and over there as part of their, uh, being within four hundred feet of the project. I understand that and I understand that that's part of the P U D, I get that. But I, I, I feel like Colin too, if, if they are using on a permanent basis eighteen to twenty lots in those two lots, then we need to take a look at that somehow. And I, I don't know if that's, if there's a permanent charge, if they rent space, I'm not sure what the answer is. Uh, or if that is part of the P U D process and we simply said, we look, you know, we have to overlook it at this point. So I, I, I don't know the answer, but I would like to hear Andy's, um, piece on it. And I think that'll come up later, right, parking?
Yeah, it's kind of like, you know, like the boiler, they didn't have parking, they still had a little parking.
Right.
They utilize the bike and.
Right.
City parking and they utilize a lot of different things and, you know, that's kinda how their community and everything is.
Right.
That's kinda how I.
And residence is a permanent thing, you know, so that's on the other.
Right.
Yeah.
It's coming and going at different times of the day and there, when there's not a lot of action downtown.
Very successful, you got all forty-four units, so each one's got two cars.
And then also.
Eighty-eight cars.
In fact, on the Tera Verde landscaping plan we just got, there, there's actually parking spaces, thirteen, sixteen parking spaces on High Street. And it's nowhere else on any of the drawings. It's the only place that, that is there. So I'm not sure, and that's the only place that shows up. So I'm not sure if that's being counted as part, part of the parking or not. And I guess my charge would be for Andy to give us a, a more detailed look at parking and what's possible, what's not.
Yeah, I just, it's just a point, like, um, I mean, uh, no one wants a multi-story parking garage in this ten-space area here. So no one wants to look at that. I don't think that's the solution, but no one wants all the parking, or cars on the sides of the streets in front of their house and stuff like that either.
Right. Yeah, I just think clarification of the issue would be very helpful, right then.
Um, I can dress, just all around the topic, I'll just start to really quit. Um, the ordinance requires two spaces per dwelling, which as you noted, requires eighty-eight spaces in the downtown and in the mixed-use district. Uh, the city also permits applicants to count public parking toward that required minimum if those spaces are within four hundred feet of the property. Um, so within four hundred feet, believe it or not, you have a lot of public parking. Um, you have the lot, um, you have street parking in some cases, you have parking, um, across the street near the library, you have parking on City Hall here and in addition to the parking that they have on the site. So in terms of the ordinance, they have enough. So I mean, I certainly understand the concerns. Um, I don't know that every unit's gonna have two cars, maybe they will. Um, but, you know, a lot of the, the, the manual to talk about this kind of development, people tend to not move cars as much when you have a site like this where you can walk to stuff. Um, there's not as much traffic and parking generation needed because there are just, you know, fewer cars and they're more walkable. But, um, yeah, it's something, if, as we work through this, if you want, uh, further, you know, detail as far as parking.
Yeah, just kind of focus on it as much as possible. Mark?
I just wanted to add you, what Marty was talking about is as a resident, a lifelong resident of Lowell, I can't think, I'm, I'm in Lowell every, every day. And in the weekends, we kept, there's nowhere you can go to the Flat River or Sneakers and park where you need to park. It's a walkable. We, we seem to adjust with every single business or building that's here in Lowell. So, you know, I think the Thursday nights at Sneakers, you park either at the library behind, or the library or behind here. If, you know, again, like we said, or with the boiler, you park it across the street. I mean, we just seem to adjust. But I just wanted to add what Marty had said.
Yeah, and I think my personal opinion is it's a good thing when the city complains about not having enough parking. It means we're doing something right.
I know, sure, but ask the people who own the houses across from this place if they're doing something right and they got the cars on their front street.
Question this out?
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Parking easement they got, is that for like boat trailers to park over there off of High Street?
That's.
I don't know, it just showed up on this one piece, that's, that's the only, that's the only one that's on.
So.
Oh, the parking, I'm sorry.
Yeah, on the, on the, so right up against the school, if you, if you go out there, it's, it's hard to see, but there are really, really faded, really visible striped parking spaces up along, uh, in the high street right of way that face up against the school, those are existing, they're not proposed as part of this development. So I think on the site plan there, uh, on that, on that landscaping plan, those are shown as an existing, yeah, those are shown as existing spaces, they're not considered to be part of the application. They're not, it's not on the absence property.
Okay.
Uh, as well. So those wouldn't be included, but I think that they're on there just as an existing feature of the site. And if you go out there, it's, they're barely visible, I can go look at them again, but they're there, you barely see them, but they're there.
So, yeah. He was right, the background, and that is when Mark asked me for a survey or something that I could send in that he could use to do his work, that's why I sent him and it showed both spaces because we didn't have that evolution in the ground yet to send them. Yeah. Again, there's a question, I guess, on the, across the street, uh, the hatch mark there that says parking easement. Does anybody know what that is? Public parking easement. Public parking, okay, thank you. Nine, nine spaces. Okay, thank you. Um, again, I, my, my thought is, is to kind of have Andy put together the entire parking issue and explain.
Yeah, and I just bring it up just.
Yeah, I, I thoroughly agree with that.
I'm not, I'm sure Andy puts this out for boat trailers.
Right, right. Well, that's part of it.
Yeah, we did like, there's at least usually three or four trailers.
Right.
For fishermen or whatever.
And, and that should, you know, be a part of that discussion.
I should want them in the city parking lot.
Right, exactly.
I think this kind of development in the city is designed not for commuters. It's designed for walkers, you know, it's, it's, it's the two.
It's perfect for somebody downtown wants to be hanging out.
So the, so the two cars per single unit, uh, I think.
And that's fine, and that's part of the P U D, we can certainly waive some of the qualifications. We just need to understand what we're waiving, that's all. Okay, sir? Name and address to the place.
My name is Jerry Zanstra, I'm one of the partners, uh, and my address is two sixteen West Main, unit number seven. This is not my area of expertise, but I wanna understand that what is required of us is what we are meeting. Is that correct, Andy?
Uh, with regard to parking, yes, you have satisfied with the question.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, qualifying conditions, Andy?
Um, so this, this little bit shorter section here, there's, there's three standards. So in order to qualify for a P U D, we put it here, um, so you can understand what we're looking at when the application comes in. The first qualifying condition is that the tract of land for which a P U D application is received must either be in one ownership or will bring approval of the owner's all affected properties. This is what Todd was alluding to earlier. Um, when you're going to propose a P U D, you have to know all the properties that you're proposing to develop. Or if you don't, you gotta get permission from everyone else that owns all of those properties. Um, in this case, as Todd mentioned, there is that part of the school building that extends into the high street right of way, which is this little area here on the side of site plans, uh, that's in this kind of red X-out color, that's the part that sticks out into the right of way. And, uh, as, as of now, that is supposed to be removed. So with that removal, then they would own all of the affected, um, property. So that standard would be satisfied. The second qualifying condition is that the proposed development must fulfill at least one of the following conditions. There are four listed. Uh, A, the P U D contains two or more separate and distinct uses, for example, residential ones and office or commercial uses. B, the P U D cites significant natural features encompassing at least twenty-five percent of the land area of the P U D, which will be preserved as a result, as a result of the P U D plan. C, the P U D is designed to preserve in perpetuity at least sixty percent of the total area of the open space. Or D, the P U D constitutes a significant redevelopment of an underutilized or vacant property where conventional development may not be feasible. So as I mentioned, this needs to satisfy one of those four criteria. Uh, we believe that this pretty clearly satisfies the fourth item here, D, that constitutes a significant redevelopment of an underutilized or vacant property where conventional development may not be feasible. Item three, and we'll get into this in more, in more detail here in a couple of minutes. Uh, so the application I'll demonstrate proposed P U Ds consistent with the adopted master plan. As we've been talking about, that both the master plan and the zoning ordinance have this property in a, in a mixed-use type designation or zoning district in the case of the ordinance. So in that designation, it, it, it contemplates quite a variety of uses and more important, uh, as far as master plan is concerned, more important in these mixed-use areas, especially here downtown, is the form, the style of development kind of takes precedent over land use, how the property's being used. So in this case, um, because this is proposed to be a, you know, fairly compact, walkable, urban-type development, um, we feel like that it's consistent with the master plan and that it's, it, it, it fulfills those objectives that the master plan is seeking to, um, is seeking to further. So now we have the, the standards for rezoning.
Andy, hold on one second here, we just finished the qualifying conditions, I think they're pretty self-explanatory. Anybody have any questions or information?
Okay. Um, so when the planning commission and city council is considering a rezoning to P U D, there are some standards in the zoning ordinance that must be satisfied. So this is one where, um, each one of these standards need to be satisfied in the opinion of, of the planning commission if you're going to make a positive recommendation. Um, if one or more of these you feel is not satisfied, then that likely grounds to obviously not issue a, a positive recommendation here. So we're gonna walk through these, Mr. Chairman, you wanna handle these one at a time? Um, there are six of them, I believe.
You know, I think it might be better to do one at a time, although number one is fairly short. So I think we could probably get them to.
So the first one is that the proposed P U D complies with the purpose and qualifying conditions of sections fifteen point oh one and oh two. That's literally just what we just went over, each of those standards here. In our view, as, as the consultants here, we feel like it does meet the standards, both of the, uh, the purpose and objectives of the P U D chapter and the qualifying conditions outlined above that we just went through. Item two is that the uses conducted within the P U D, the proposed, the P U D's impact on the community and other aspects of the P U D are consistent with and further implement a policy of the adopted master plan. I'm a planner, so this is a, 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 a big one for me as a planner. So the Lowell master plan was adopted, I don't know, seven, I believe, it's been reviewed a couple of times since then, no changes have been made. There is a lot in the master plan that supports a project like this. For example, there's a goal in the master plan for community image that promotes Lowell's image as a historic community with natural resources such as the Flat River. There are measures in there to improve access and use to the Flat River. There are, there's also a community image goal that includes encouraging the restoration of building fronts to their original style. There's a land use goal that talks about promoting a walkable community with stable neighborhoods can be located public, commercial, and service uses. Um, and there's objectives, also talks about improving pedestrian access to the Flat River, uh, land use patterns that facilitate walking to and within downtown, encourage them redevelopment in and around the downtown. Those are all pretty comfortably within, uh, the realm of what's considered consistent with the master plan in my opinion. The master plan also talks about housing goals, talking about a, a variety of housing opportunities on a range of lot sizes to provide affordable housing. You know, we're not sure exactly what the target market is here, what the price point is gonna be for these units and what that range is. So I can't really speak to whether or not it fulfills any kind of affordable or attainable housing objectives that are in the master plan. Um, but there is, I think. But there is, I think, at, at a minimum, there is support within the master plan for a project like this, you know, in several of those conditions that we just discussed. Questions?
Good? What are you good? Okay. Number three?
Third standard is that the proposed PUD shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of adjacent property, the surrounding uses of land, the natural environment, and the capacity of public services and facilities affected by the development. So, this is kind of an interesting site in that its location, you know, kind of in the larger context of this area of the city, it's sort of an interesting transition between the downtown, which is obviously fairly intensely developed, and the library, and we have this piece, and then pretty much all the way to the north, starting on King Street, we have single-family neighborhoods. So, you know, this, this site provides kind of an interesting transition between the more intense service, commercial, and institutional type uses that are downtown, including City Hall, libraries, schools, et cetera. And, and the neighboring, much quieter, single-family neighborhoods that start on King Street, including North and the East. So, that's kind of a long way of me saying that, and this is more dense than you typically see a city block develop in terms of the number of units, right, when we don't typically have a city block that has 44 residential units on it. However, given its proximity to downtown, given where they oriented the site and how they're using the existing building, most of that impact isn't going to be felt, at least not as much to the north, because you don't have that as much intense development on the north, the most intensely developed buildings are going to be on the west, on the south, through the school and bus garages. So, again, we feel that, given the overall character of, of the area, of the neighborhood, and this particular kind of transition role that this property is going to end up serving, you know, this kind of development to me makes, makes some sense here. As far as natural features are concerned, this is an urban site, so there really aren't many. This is in a, you know, greenfield, rural, undeveloped pasture with a lot of trees and all those kind of things, so there aren't any natural features of any significance to our knowledge here. And, you know, the applicant has indicated there's an increase in the overall vegetative density on the site as it evolved of the development, obviously that's going to come through the landscaping plan, there will be more trees on the site, probably there was there now, somewhere green space, I think, than, than, than what's there now. So, again, those, I think, are all contributing positively to, to that particular standard.
Andy, the last paragraph there, the public facilities and services, and requesting additional comments and approval from the city engineer near DPW. Do we need that for the rezoning, or would that more come into play with the site plan?
I think we should get their input at least in concept prior to any sort of formal action by council, but you're right, once we get into that, that final step where they're looking at the construction drawings, you know, that's when the DPW specifically is going to get more involved, making sure that those utility connections are in the right spot. You know, we'll look at, you know, grainy, grading and drainage and things like that now, that information has been provided, so we'll keep looking at that. But a lot of those other more nuanced items will come out when we get near the construction phase, but, you know, in concept, we'll need to make sure that those are not even cared for prior to a formal rezoning action being done.
Again, looking forward then to next month, would you put that on your list of things to accomplish? And let us, let us know what those details are, or that it has been addressed?
Yep.
The fourth standard of approval is that the proposed PUD shall not be hazardous to adjacent property or involve uses, activities, materials, or equipment that will be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of persons or property due to excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, or glare. Because this is a residential development, a lot of these don't necessarily apply, so I'm certainly hoping there's not going to be a lot of smoke or fumes, for example, coming from a completely residential development. And so, you know, typically, the biggest concerns that we have with more intense residential development relate to traffic, parking, noise in some instances, just because you have a fairly large number of people living in a, in a, in this smaller area. So, there will be some impact of that, I mean, this will generate additional traffic congestion, you know, I don't know if it's going to be a lot, because you have a fairly well-developed grid in this area. But there will be additional traffic, there will be some additional noise, some additional activity, you know, some additional glare is possible, it's because you have sunlight for something up, new buildings, new windows, and things like that. Now, whether that's going to be excessive, you know, beyond what is ordinarily expected in a city like this, I don't think that's going to be the case. You know, but again, I think that that's, that's not, it's something worth discussing, discussing, I think, for the Planning Commission, but I don't, you know, my opinion is that that's not excessive, not going to be excessive.
I think with a lot of vegetation that absorbs a lot of sound and obviously glare, if there is a...
Yeah, it would help, for sure. Number five, the proposed PUD shall not place the mayor's unpublic services and facilities in more than current or anticipated future capacity. You know, again, we have 44 units here, so you're looking at 88 required parking spaces, and, you know, number of people, obviously, we don't know for sure, but, you know, ballparking what your current average household size is, you're hundreds to 120-some residents potentially living here when this is, on all three phases are done. So, there will be additional demands in terms of, you know, water, sewer, police and fire protection, and things like that. Obviously, if there's, when you have more people, you have more needs. And, you know, again, I, I don't think that's going to be more than current or anticipated future capacity, we can certainly check into those issues. You know, there's not, it's not such an overwhelming number of units that, to me, would threaten to, you know, completely overwhelm what services are presently provided.
Well, again, as you pointed out, this is a three-phase project, so not all of those people are coming at one time.
Right.
In order to usage and all of those kinds of things, but it would be consistent with planning for the future, you know, for all of our utilities, as an example. So, again, the conversation with the city engineer and DPW would be appropriate.
I think there would be an assurance that being, it was a school, it could handle large, more people.
Right. Yeah, I'm not anticipating anything there, I just think it's going to, you're going to have, or plenty of time to, for the city to react, they have plenty of time to do so, so it's a 10-year project, and it gives them plenty of time to react to 14 more people or units, so, yeah.
The sixth standard is that the proposed PUD shall satisfy all applicable local, state, and federal law rules and regulations, and if approved, that would be addressed as a condition of approval, we'll get into some of those applicable laws here when we talk floodplain overlay district. But otherwise, here we don't have any other specific commentary regarding that one, obviously, the kind of building codes and, you know, other applicable construction goals.
Commissioners, anything on the six PUD plan and rezoning standards? Any questions at this point, of Andy, or in general? Okay, then let's continue.
So, the last section that I want to review with you guys is for the floodplain overlay district standards. Kevin mentioned there are, it's kind of a weird site, it's partially within the floodplain and partially not in the floodplain. Most of the southern part of the property is, is within the floodplain, and a lot of the northern part is not. But nevertheless, because some of the land here is involved in the floodplain, we're going to go, go through these standards. And there's a couple items here that I think could point out, and we'll kind of go from there. So, the first one, number one, it just lists some standards here, says development shall not occur except in accordance with the following standards. A, the requirements of this chapter shall be met. B, the requirements of underlying zoning district and applicable general provisions of this ordinance would be met, which is kind of what we're doing now. Item C, unnecessary permits have been issued by the appropriate local, state, and federal authorities, including floodplain permit letter of authority, et cetera. This is one of the items that I'm curious about, so if, I don't know if Kevin or anybody from the applicant's side has some input here. Typically, when you develop, when you're doing anything in a floodplain, if you're constructing a new building, if you're filling or modifying the land, depending on how much dirt you're bringing in, you might have to perform a compensating cut elsewhere and get a Part 31 permit from the DEQ. I'm not sure exactly how much fill, if any, would be brought into this site, probably wouldn't be a lot, because there's already existing buildings there. But I think it's worth at least, you know, looking at that issue, make sure that there's not something here that we need to, I think we need to address, I've not seen any submitted permit, nor have I seen a letter that, you know, like a letter of no jurisdiction, or a letter of no interest from the state that says, you know, we don't require that, so go ahead and do it.
Again, you handle that directly with the applicants, with the, you know, floodplain?
In the past, what we've done is just asked the applicant to address this, so if they can provide, you know, either what's going to be filled, or a letter either way from the, from the state, you know, indicating what would be necessary here and taken up from us. So, it, it just needs to be addressed, and it's not been addressed yet.
Are you talking about a compensating cut or something like that?
Yeah.
Could be possible.
We've done it for a couple of things, yeah. Few more here, so it says the proposed use and or structure shall be designed so as not to reduce the water pumping capacity of the floodplain or significantly change the volume or speed or flow of the water. This is more of an engineering question, you know, the issue here is that during a flood event, we don't want to be making that flood elevation higher, we don't want to be making the water move faster, things of that nature. So, that's, again, that's, you know, I don't foresee that being a significant issue here, but it's something from an engineering perspective that we should, we should review in the course of this project. The last item, IME, utilities, streets, off-sheet parking, rear门 structures, building for public or recreational uses shall be designed so as not to increase the possibility of flood or be otherwise detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare. So, some of the buildings are going to be within the floodplain, some of them will be outside of the floodplain. There are already standards and regulations there that will govern that, so a part of the building that's within the floodplain, that the lowest habitable floor has to be elevated to at least one foot above that floodplain elevation. So, if you do have a 100-year flood event, like we had in 2013, you know, you're not flooding people's homes. Some folks may, as Todd said, may be required by flood insurance. That would be a requirement of the lender typically, and the federal government controls the rate of that, so everyone would, I think, would get charged the same annual premium on that, I forget what the number is, but... You know, generally speaking, though, with IME, I don't have any significant concerns that this would otherwise be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. There's not a huge new footprint of buildings here, so there's not a huge volume of space being taken up, like we have seen in other instances where there's a low spot that's becoming a higher spot, and then it's being occupied by a building, so you have a lot of fill coming in and a lot of volume. We're not seeing that in this application, because most of the bulk on the site is already there, between the school and the bus garage. The last item here, under two, there are a couple of specific base flood elevation standards. This is the one that talks about it being one foot, the lowest habitable floor being at least one foot above base flood elevation. And then, there is also a standard in here that requires a PE or architect to certify that the standards are met and that floodproofing methods are employed inadequate to withstand the flood depth, pressures, velocities, impact, and uplift forces, and other factors associated with base flood and the location of the structure. Such certifications shall be submitted and provided, as provided in this ordinance, shall indicate the elevation to which the structure is floodproofed. So, again, this is something that is in here in the ordinance to make sure that when someone is designing a building or structure that is within the 100-year floodplain, that it's not, you know, going to cause large structural problems if it's, if it becomes detached from its foundation during a significant flood event. You know, even given 13, those kind of forces weren't, you know, pushing buildings around, but, you know, water is powerful, and that's a standard that's been here for a long time. And so, that's just something that will need to be addressed moving forward, to make sure that, that the appropriate building codes and the appropriate provisions are being taken care of.
Andy, again, will you take care of that and report back to us in the, in the latest meeting? And also, obviously, working with the applicants on it.
So, that wraps up the standards of review. So, the couple of things that I had requested the Planning Commission talk about tonight, one, was whether or not you want a public hearing on this. If you do, that requires a fifteen-hour notice, and in reasonably speaking, as soon as that can happen, it's going to be your regular August meeting. If you don't want a full public hearing, that's, that's fine. And so, then you would just be, you know, looking at, at the discussion items that I've included here. So, the discussion items, we've kind of talked about most of this already just in the course of our conversation. But we have open space, architectural compatibility, walkability, connections, proximity to downtown. Just some of the items that we've been talking about, is there adequate open space in your opinion for, that works for the city and will work for residents of the PUD? Is the architectural detail provided significantly or sufficiently compatible with the downtown and with the rest of the city in your, in, in your view? We talked a little bit about some of the sidewalk and pedestrian connections. You know, Marty, you had a couple suggestions there to connect some of the sidewalks within the development to provide some greater connections and walkability, and then, the last bullet I have here is proximity to downtown, which, again, looking a little bit larger scale at this, you know, do you, do you agree, I guess, with our, with our opinion that this is consistent with the, with the master plan, that it's consistent, generally speaking, with the city's overall vision for development through the preservation of historic buildings, redeveloping the site, things like that? So, those are my suggestions. And then, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you for the Planning Commission to deliberate, and if you have any further questions for me that I can answer or clarify for you, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioners, I would like to propose that the Planning Commission not hold a public hearing. We've had really good input, both from the applicant and from Andy and everybody else on this subject. And at our August meeting, I would further propose that Andy come back with a detailed written update for this, for the entire PUD.